Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cordova Recreation and Park District. It is Wednesday, November 14th, and the time is 6:30.
Thank you. To lead us in our pledge this evening, I'd like to welcome to the podium our new Marketing and Communications Specialist, Katie Nagy Chow.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Directors. Katie Nagy Chow, she is our new Communication, Marketing and Communications Specialist. Two weeks? Is this week two? Week two.
And she's still here.
She's still here. Let me read you a little bit about Katie, and then she's going to have a few minutes to chat about herself as well. So Katie has a Bachelor's Degree in English from the University of California, Santa Barbara, and a Master's Degree in Professional Communications from California State University. Fullerton, sorry. I know you've got to say those, where it's from. Her most recent experience was as a Media Representative and Communications Associate for the Walt Disney Company, where she was responsible for Community Relations, Social Media, Internal Communications, Public Affairs, Project Management, and Special Events. So she's done a lot. I'll let her tell you a little bit about the rest of her experience, but she has already hit the ground running. She's in full process with the rec guide. She's already made some amazing changes that I hope everybody really loves, but we're keeping her busy. We're excited to have her on our team. It's an honor for us to have such a talented young lady. So here's Katie.
Thank you, Jill. I'm really excited to be here. Like Jill said, I was working for the Walt Disney Company for the last little over two and a half years. While I was doing that and accomplishing my grad degree, I also was a volunteer Public Relations and Social Media Strategist for a local animal rescue as well. And top of that, I was working with the Newport Beach Film Festival as a volunteer event coordinator and media relations specialist. So all of these have helped me. I'm excited to bring in some really incredible changes and work with such a great team. I feel like they're family already. So if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Welcome.
Thank you.
It's good to see you. You had, you were joining a great team. So you're going to really be excited about that, and we're thrilled that you're here. And so hopefully, we'll get to see a lot more of you.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so now we are going to roll call.
Director Lineback?
Here.
Director Sloan? Secretary Danzel?
Here.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Here.
And Chair Reyes?
Here.
All right, so we're going to ask if there are any board disclosures on any action items that we are having tonight. Do we have, seeing none, let us move on to item B.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Comments by the public on non-agenda items. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And actually, at this time, I would like to welcome to the podium Matt Duarte, who is the new Executive Director for Capri and CARPD. He would like to introduce himself to the board.
Welcome.
Yes, hello. Good evening, Board. As she said, my name is Matt Duarte. I'm the new Executive Director for both Capri and CARPD. See familiar face over here, Mr. Sloan. I just wanted to stop by, introduce myself. I know some of you have experience with Capri and CARPD. A little bit about myself, so I actually used to sit in your seat there. I was a board member down in Valleywide Recreation and Park District, down in Southern California. We were about 850 square miles, had 80 parks, so we had a lot of issues popping up, and I enjoyed serving in that capacity and serving my community. Professionally, I am an attorney, and sometimes I don't like to share that because people throw things at me, but I've been a litigator for 10 years, so in large part on the employment defense part of that. So I think both my background as a board member and attorney had kind of a nice nexus for this position. I've been on it about six weeks now, kind of getting up to speed with Pat Kabul again retiring here. So it's been a good experience, and I hope that my experiences will be able to serve not only you all, but just our membership at large in both of Capri and CARPD. So I thank you for allowing me to come and address you tonight, and hope you guys have a good meeting.
Thank you very much for coming and introducing yourselves to us. Now we can put names with faces, and we're looking forward to working with you. Do we have any other comments from directors?
I just had a comment. You know, Paradise was hit pretty hard, and it was one of our members. Do you have any update on the Paradise Park District, actually, that we could?
Yes, thank you for actually bringing that up. So I was able to speak with their general manager this week, and his head spinning a bit, as you can imagine. I guess the silver lining is that their structures weren't as hit as badly as they initially thought. So they have a large, I think it's like $3 million facility there, and it suffered some, I guess we'd call it heat damage. The fires were so intense, it was blowing out windows, but it didn't actually, the structure didn't catch on fire. So there's going to be some repairs. I was talking to him as he was walking around, and he said, you know, it looks like gas line melted. So there's stuff like that that will need to get fixed, but relative to the rest of the community, there, it was pretty, you know, they're utterly decimated, I would say. So a lot of his concern was for his staff and how they're going to try and hit the ground running once they're able to safely go back up there. And why, thank you for reminding me, is because if you all are interested or available, we're collecting donations of, you know, actually, one of the things they need is duffel bags, you know, to carry clothing, you know, extra clothing, that type of stuff, because I'm going to be heading up there in the next week or so to kind of survey, and so we were going to bring some items. So if you guys would like to donate that, I can get you, my Anderson and Patrick can get the address too, if you'd like to send donations to those people.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to item C.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item C is the Consent Calendar. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. And this evening, we have four items for your consideration. Item C1 is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Directors on October 17th, 2018. Item C2 is the District Financial Report for September 2018. Item C3 is the Quarterly Claims Report for July to September 2018. And item C4 is to approve and sign their certificates for employee recognition for 2017-18.
All right, so at this time, are there any need to pull any items on the consent calendar from staff, from the board?
I'm not asking to pull an item. I do have a question I'd like to ask.
Thank you. Director Lineback, yes?
On the district-wide financial report, I was a little bit concerned. It's something you've probably heard from me before, about the water bill. It's, even though the budget was increased by quite a bit, which it needed to be, obviously, we're still, we've used more than 50% of the annual allocation, and I was just wondering if there was a plan for trying to keep that bill within budget.
Jerry, do you want to maybe step up, and we can discuss what our assessment is to date with a little more detail?
Maybe the rains might help when winter comes, but...
Okay, good evening. Yes, we're very well aware that we've been using quite a bit of water. It has been very, very dry, the weather, and typically at this time of the year, we would have had rain. However, we had been shutting down the water quite a bit, dialing it down to 50%. Recently, we are turning off the systems. I know we've had some concerns for those up in Gold River, and that their grass is getting brown, as well as some other places, but right now, we're just trying to keep within budget. This year, we also, since we did increase the budget a bit, we are also looking at possibly adjusting it for this coming spring, depending upon what the weather conditions are like. We do, we'll keep the water off. We'll still pay all the taxes and surcharges and fees that everyone else pays during this time period, but typically, we will turn on the water again toward the end of March, early April, but then it will be a very limited basis. We'll concentrate predominantly upon the playing fields, where we rent out the fields and where the kids and adults play. We'll definitely keep an eye open for, eye on the budget itself. This past year, since it's been the first time for Herring Landing, we've used a lot more water than what I anticipated, being a sizable park that it is. So I'll be asking to make some adjustments to our budget there. It's just that it's going to be needed. We just didn't know how much water we would need in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we also learned a lesson when we activated our plan originally. When we started off the season, there was browning going on, and the displeasure of our residents for that basically says that we need to invest maybe some more in the watering so that the parks are remaining green as a value that is very high to this community. So in future budgets, we're going to really need to figure out what are some really good numbers. We're kind of stabbing in the dark a little bit. To note also, we just got a notice in October for an additional increase of 33% from Sacramento County Water, which would be activated November 1st. And so these are the kind of notices that we're getting, and of course, it comes after we set our budgets for the year, so it's leaving us in a bit of a, a little bit of a limbo in terms of how do you predict what that effect would be in that part of our district that has the Sacramento County Water service. So we're adjusting at mid-year at this point to figure those kind of things out. We're still in contact with Golden State Water. We're going to be back in contact with Sacramento County to see about whether or not we can get an irrigation rate or something that isn't as, say, like a residential rate that we're currently on. So those discussions are in the works, and we're hoping to see if we can kind of hopefully contain some of this ongoing raising of water costs, because obviously, if you get a water cost increase at your home, you can just quadruple that for our need in our parks. So it's definitely a challenge. We're going to continue to work with the water agencies to make sure that they're aware of our circumstances, and, you know, unfortunately, we're going to have to raise our budgets in that area to maintain the values of this community, because they do want their parks green as the number one priority, it seems, so, yeah.
Can I just say one thing? My son just recently had a soccer game up in Orangeville, and their soccer fields are very brown and dry, and so, I mean, I think ours are looking pretty good. So I don't, you know, it's like, it depends on what the standards are. I don't know if there's any standards, but the fields are being used more. I'm sure we're watering more, but the other areas, they, you know, they don't have to be green in the far-off corner, I don't think, but...
The residents were very clear when we did our process that it was unacceptable to them that the browning of our fields is the solution to our financial problems related to water. So with that very loud and clear message from multiple people, we're going to try our best to maintain a level of green that's acceptable, but also responsible, knowing that we also have to provide other services than watering our parks. So, yes, I'm proud of the way that they've actually looked this summer. We've gotten great compliments when we were able to kind of bring them back from the browning effect from the beginning. So kudos to Jerry and the staff for maintaining them as long as we can. We've had to rain too, which is really a negative factor here, so let's just pray for some rain coming forward, and hopefully, it won't impact us too much coming into the spring when we need to turn the water back on.
Thank you very much, Jerry. All right, so are, do we have any other questions? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I would like to move that the Board of Directors approve consent calendar items C1 through C4.
Moved by Director Lineback? Seconded by Director Sloan? Secretary Sloan? No, Director Sloan. I'm one month ahead. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan? Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye.
All right, motion carried, and so now we are on item D, Presentations.
There are none.
Committee Reports.
There are none.
Wonderful. Item F, Public Hearing.
There are none.
Good job. All right, so now we're on the regular calendar.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item G1 is to adopt Resolution 18/19-25, Resolution of Intention to Establish Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services, and provide for a Notice of Hearing to Establish Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services for December 19th, 2018. And I just wanted to point out, there are some changes on this item, and you have in front of you on the dais, the amended documents for your review, and I will turn it over to Finance Manager Matt Goodell.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Chair Reyes and Board Members. So we have been talking about development and new growth for years, and finally, it's here. And so with development comes people, comes parks, and my favorite, the mechanisms in which we fund those maintenance services. So what staff is going to be doing tonight is proposing a District Boundary Community Facilities District, okay, one encompassing one. So instead of forming small individual neighbors, neighborhoods of community facility districts like we have been doing, it just made sense to create one, over-encompassing CFD, the entire district boundary. Don't want to end up with like 50 of them, so right now, we're moving forward, we're just going to do one. And it makes sense, because everything that's new growth outside of those red boxes, so the red boxes represent existing ones, so we have Pomeroy D, Villages, Sunridge, Mather, Glenboro East, and those are existing. And so what's going to happen is new growth is the other areas that are undeveloped are just going to be annexed in to the new CFD that we're proposing tonight, okay? And it really makes sense, because it's easier to manage one, and also budget for one versus the 50 that we'd end up if we parceled them all out. So as Clerk Jones mentioned, we do have a couple items that were modified from the original documents that you see in the packet tonight. And the reason why is originally, we had verbal commitment from three developers that were going to be part of the formation. You know, typically, we would have just formed the CFD, and then we'd annex the new, new development as they come, but we had three that were very anxious to get into this CFD so they can move forward with their own final map. Well, one chose to step out, and so that's why we had to do some modifications and tweaking to the documents that you have. So we have two developers moving forward as part of the formation, and that one later on will be part of an annexation, probably sometime early 2019. So not a big deal, but something that we have to tweak tonight. The map has to be revised, obviously, because it's not going to include Cressla J. And I believe you were handed a revised, updated map at the dais. And after review of the description of services, it was determined that a minor change in the language to clarify the intent of the maintenance services to include all amenities that CARPD owns, we're going to go ahead and utilize these funds towards the maintenance of them. So I believe it's highlighted, another document that you received in yellow included on the dais there for you guys. All right, it's also important to note that there are no changes to the resolution. So the document that you're actually approving tonight, there are no changes to it, because that's just for the formation of the CFD, not specific to those developments that are, that are going along for the ride. So with that, I would like to introduce Brian Brown. He's our consultant with Francisco and Associates. He will walk you through the CFD process, the timeline, the details, and the developments that are joining in for this formation. Mr. Brian Brown?
Thank you, Matt. All right, so this evening, the CFD before you is proposed to consist of two developments, the Douglas 98 and Grantline 208 Developments, which collectively are to construct 1,030 single-family detached homes. Each of these developments are conditioned to mitigate the fiscal impacts of their projects, so the CFD is being proposed to establish, or to be established to provide this funding mechanism for new development to pay for the fiscal impacts of the projects. The boundaries of the CFD are currently coterminous with those of Douglas 98 and the Grantline 208 Developments, with a future annexation area that's coterminous with the boundaries of the district. The maximum annual rate per single-family home is $403 a year, and the maximum annual rates are, will increase annually by the greater of the prior calendar year's Consumer Price Index, or 3%. The tax may be levied in perpetuity to pay for services, as long as the services continue to be provided by the district. At build-out, the CFD in these developments are estimated to generate approximately $415,000 in fiscal year 2018, $19 annually. Again, as Matt had mentioned earlier, this amount's going to differ from the figures shown in the original staff report because of the removal of Cressley as of today. Tonight is going to be the first legislative action to form the CFD. So this evening, the board's being asked to consider and adopt the Resolution of Intention, which is going to describe the authorized facilities and services to be funded. It's going to propose a special tax formula. It's going to set a public hearing date, which will allow the public to hear and be heard, and it's going to direct the preparation of a CFD report. The second legislative action, which is proposed to occur on December 19th, on that, on that evening, the board will hold a public hearing, approve the resolutions in formation, calling for a special election. The ballots will be canvassed, and we'll confirm and declare the results. After that, on that same evening, there will be an adoption and perform the first two readings of the ordinance, which will order the annual levying of the special taxes. The third legislative action is scheduled for January 16th, and that will be the second reading of the ordinance. This concludes our presentation for the evening, but if staff, but if you have any questions, staff and myself are available to answer any you may have.
Do we have any questions, Director Lineback?
I do. I was curious about the annexation process. So apparently, you have, at least at this point, one developer who wasn't willing to sign off on this particular CFD, and yet you mentioned they're going to be annexed in later. So can they resist this annexation effort?
So I think there's a couple components to that question. One would be, as a condition of their project, they're going to be required to mitigate the financial impact. So they're either going to need to set up, I mean, I guess options are maybe set up an endowment. Developers don't do that. Typically, they're going to be annexing into a CFD of this sort. So with that said, the way this CFD is structured, as Matt had mentioned, we needed an initial development or two to form the CFD around, but we set up a future annexation area that's coterminous with the boundaries of the district. So anytime that a future development comes in and needs to meet this condition, they'll have the opportunity to annex in. In annexing in, it's actually going to be a streamlined process. So rather than having three board meetings, if they annex into the CFD, it'll only be one. So it'll, there's going to be some efficiency both for the district as well as for the developer. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just curious if somebody was reluctant, you know, on the front end, you know, to, to sign off on the CFD, you know, how do you handle the fact that, okay, so now we're just annex you in?
Yeah, and I think one of the main reasons to, that they were, may have been hesitant was more due to the speed that the other two developers were really looking to form a CFD for. So being that all three were, have projects that are active and have conditions that need to be met, the other two, just their projects are moving a little quicker than the other, which led them the opportunity to say, hey, hold on, you know, we're just going to wait, and we're going to do this in the beginning of 19.
Other questions? I was going to ask about the, the city of Rancho Cordova, because they are our land use authority, and did we, how are they seeing this action?
Yeah.
Are they supportive? Do they think it's a good practice?
Right. So Matt Goodell, Finance Manager. So it's kind of interesting, because I was going into this thinking we're just going to have all these mini CFDs all over our district, and when I talked to our legal counsel, he said, well, what people are doing now is having the boundary and then annexing it into one. And I said, but what if, to answer Lineback's question, is, Board Member Lineback, is that we can have actually different tax rate zones if we have to, based on maybe they have different needs for whatever their area is going on. We can have a different tax rate within the same CFD. But I did benchmark others, looked at Dublin and a couple of cities that our legal council is working on, and that's exactly what they're doing. They're having over-encompassing CFD. The city does the exact same thing with their roads. They don't have a bunch of mini CFDs for their roads. They just have one, collecting in the same pot with different tax rates potentially for those roads, and it goes into the same pot of money, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I think there are no other questions right now.
But I'm very excited about this process. An annexation's one meeting, yes. I love that, yeah.
So the question is, do we want Matt to have an easier life or a harder one, huh? Okay, so I am obvious, at this point, I'm willing to entertain a motion for this item, G1.
I will move that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 18/19-25, declaring the intention to establish Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services, and set the public hearing date for December 19, 2018.
Moved by Director Lineback?
Second.
Seconded by Director Vice, by Secretary Danzel. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan? Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to be regular calendar item G2.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item G2 is to approve the closure of the district's administrative office located in the Rancho Cordova City Hall Building for the period of Monday, December 24th through Friday, December 28th, 2018, and I'll turn it over to Human Resource Manager Andrea White.
Good evening, Chair Reyes and Board of Directors. What we're bringing to you today is a motion that we brought, or a suggestion we brought last year, to close the district office or the administrative offices here at the City Hall Building for the week of Christmas. That's December 24th through the 28th. What's important to note is that we're not requesting additional holiday pay, we're just asking to close the offices to the public. People will have, or employees of the administrative offices will have the option to use vacation time if they don't want to come in, administrative leave, CTO, whatever leaves accrual are appropriate, or they could use unpaid leave, or they're more than welcome to come in to work. For example, my staff person, Jennifer, will have to come in for payroll processing. And so what we'd like to do is, since there's really only two and a half workdays available during that period of time, close the offices, and next year, we are proposing an amendment to our personnel policy, which you've all heard about, that will include the ability for the administrator to close offices at his discretion, and it'll be reported out. But until we do that amendment, and it's approved by the Board of Directors, we're going to have to bring this to you this evening.
Thank you.
I also, you know, just as a note, there's a list of what our other facilities... I also, you know, just as a note, there's a list of what our other facilities opened and closures will be. There will be quite a few people still working during that time period, but of course, closed on the actual holidays.
Any questions from Board members? All right, so I will entertain a motion.
Let's see, I'm trying to find the actual motion here, sorry.
Forty-six.
Forty-six, there it is. I had forty-five up. I move the Board of Directors approve the closure of the district administrative offices for the period of Monday, December 24th through Friday, December 20th, 2018.
Moved by Secretary Danzel?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Yearwood. Roll call vote.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye.
So we have motion carried. Thank you, Andrea. All right, so now we are going to move on to Board of Director items.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item H1 is Board Member Reports. Item A is Training. There was none in this last period. Item B is Board Member Community Activities and Meetings Report.
Wonderful. So how would we like to start this? Who would like to go first?
I would just like to make a quick note. Director Sloan and I myself just both got a text message that Folsom Cordova shut down their schools for tomorrow, so that'll affect the hideout. So just to give a heads up.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so Director Lineback?
I saw, actually, you had something on yours that I failed to put on mine. I did attend the Rancho Cordova Whistle Stop Candidate Forum, which I just appreciate the opportunity that they give us to speak to the public. I attended the Cordova Pool Community Meeting that was extremely favorably received by the people who really care about that pool, the ones that showed up, you know, are the ones that use that pool and looking forward to their kids using that pool again, and they were extremely happy with that pool plan. So I thought that was a great community meeting. I did with assistance from fellow directors, the trunk or treat at both It Takes a Lincoln Village and at Hagan Park. It's a lot of fun. The kids are having a blast with the costumes and the candy, and it's just that time of year for them, and they love it. And it's fun to go and see them and, and help them enjoy that time. And then lastly, I did go to the Rosemont Community Association Meeting. I'm trying to remember what I reported out, because I did, there was some CORPEC stuff for them, but there was also CRPD information I gave, gave to them, but I can't remember now what it was. I did bring some brochure.
Probably the grant, the dugout, and all of the work we were doing out at Rosemont Park, maybe?
That's right. I did, actually, they were very happy about the Little League fields and dugouts, and it looks like there might be some good news on the grant report in this board package too for Rosemont Park, but I didn't know about that at the time of the meeting. And just to report to you there, December meeting has been canceled. So there will be no Rosemont Community Association Meeting in December.
Thank you. Director Sloan?
Okay, so I just attended a couple of things, well, a couple, more than that, but I'm only going to report on a couple of them. The Community Outreach Meeting, I thought was, it was the third time that we've seen that presentation, and there wasn't, there was an unhappy person, and the only, the only probably reason that they're unhappy is that they're not breaking ground right now, you know, and just, but everyone's happy with what's going to be there, they can see the vision, everyone's on board, the stakeholders, the city. I mean, it's just going to be a great facility, and I just can't wait to see the progress on it and keep that reported. The other one, I went to the Halloween at Hagan, the trunk or treat, and I don't know if you guys keep track of numbers, but I thought the numbers were way up for that event. The layout was really nice, the, it seemed a lot more safer than in the past, maybe, I don't know if we started it earlier, or maybe because daylight savings time hadn't kicked in yet. It was just really nice. I left before it really got dark, and, but I did, I noticed all the little things that the Park District did to make it more festive, and I recorded it photographically, and unfortunately, I've got a 13-year-old now who didn't want to go.
Yeah.
But at least I was able to go, so.
The kid in you had to go.
I thought that was a nice event. Wonderful. Thanks.
I did attend Halloween at Hagan, was, showed up a little late. I got off work and did, was able to show up. I do have a 14-year-old daughter, she was there with her Girl Scout unit to help, I don't know exactly what they did, make bags or something so the kids had, but she said she still had a fun time, and she's gotten to that age now, she gets to give back to the community, so she really enjoys that, and she's glad that the Park District gives groups like hers an opportunity to do those things.
Wonderful.
Oh, okay for me to go?
Oh.
All right. I also attended the Whistle Stop. I didn't include that on there. It was rather refreshing not to have to get up there and speak for the first time. Just get to sit back and watch everybody else. I as well attended the pool meeting. It was very well received, and I agree that people are just so happy to see the progress, everything's moving along. So it'll look really great when it's open and water's in those pools and people are splashing and all that, and then unfortunately I'll have to do a polar plunge, but that's all right. Trunk or Treat at It Takes a Lincoln Village was a very nice event that Director Lineback and I attended, and yes, we took home the prize for the most festive, or whatever, you know, whatever. I'm not sure, I don't recall exactly what it was. So we turned around and did it all again the next night over at Halloween at Hagan, and Pam Wickens did send me a nice email earlier this week where she got a lot of positive feedback that it was nice to see the board out there doing that and handing out candy, and so, I already got plans for next year, be prepared. I also, on October 30th, attended the Special District Advisory Committee of LAFCO. Let me grab my notes from that. Let's see here. There wasn't a whole lot, you know, the agenda was very light. Spent most of the night, everybody was just kind of going around the table talking about the dilemmas they're facing. Of course, I brought up the cost of water. Recurring theme around cemetery districts, they're running out of property. I'm like, oh, no. So I said double them up, but they didn't think that was funny, how I can say that. And of course, I can't read my notes here, but there wasn't a whole lot to discuss. There's still dealings with that City of Sacramento annexation of part of the Rio Linda Park District. I can't remember their name, yeah. So that's all, that'll probably be the first thing LAFCO will have to deal with in the new year. And the whole other side of the slate of committee folks on there are all up for reelection. Office B's terms all expire on 12/31, so that's not, not us, so we're good in that regard. And let's see, last but not least, I attended the Rancho Cordova State of the City address on November 1st. Another nice event, lots of good things going on in the city. That's all I got.
Thank you, Vice Chair Yearwood. Okay, for me, the trunk and treat Halloween, I really want to thank both Director Lineback and Vice Chair Yearwood for standing in and representing us there. I came, ran in, brought the candy, but boy, that was really, and I, that was the first time I saw what the trunk or treat was, and seeing all the kids coming up and down, that was really great. So thank you for doing that for us and being out there for us. The Community Outreach Meeting, kudos. I want to say kudos to staff. I mean, you did a great presentation, you brought in experts, everything. I mean, let's face it, the, our, our residents felt they were heard, felt they, they, it was theirs, there was a buy-in, they saw what they wanted, and I really want to thank staff for the patience with which you had to deal with this and to bring it to where it is. Now, like Director Sloan said, now it's more a matter of like, it's been a while, when's it going to start? So I can't wait to get that, what do we call the, the gold shovels? Groundbreaking here. So anyway, that, I really want to thank staff for that, they did a great job there. The Whistle Stop, I attended the Whistle Stop, and again, like Director Lineback had said, it's just nice to be able to be given an opportunity to say a little something to the people that want to hear what we're here for. I want to tell you, I did end up attending a conference, the California Park Association of Park and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members Meeting. I sit, I was nominated to the board, and I was accepted as a board member, and they have this, I think it's twice a year, they have this meeting, and this, their conference was in Lake Forest in Southern California, I believe so, and, and I was not able to physically attend, but they said, okay, well, you can attend the, on a telephone conference, okay? So it was Saturday, I said, okay, no problem, we started at 10, 10:30, and I must say, I was on there, we took a lunch break, we came back, I was there till almost 3, 3:30. It's like, I didn't know this was going to take this long. But anyway, I did my duty here. And one of the things that they mentioned that I took down was for legislative, legislation update, they said the Prop 68 passed, and, and they were saying something about the, that Governor Brown also signed a bill that was allowing sidewalk vending in public places, including parks. And so they were saying that the, our park, our, our, our district needs to familiarize ourselves with the, the impact on our parks. So that was really interesting. They obviously did not support the property tax transfer impact. They also said that this housing, high-density and development bill had, had failed, but to keep your eyes open, because they may reemerge, and it has to do with taking away control from transportation, setting up transportation centers and taking some of the control away from the city. And then they do, they are preparing for their CPRS conference, so there is going to be a banquet in March, on March 21st, and this will be here in Sacramento. And so I will keep you all abreast with all the, with where we're coming, what, what they're planning for that event. I'm just thrilled it's in Sacramento. Maybe I could just physically attend, because being on that phone was like, oh. Anyway, so with that said, we are ready to move on to the next item.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item H2A is a ballot vote for the California Association for Park and Recreation in Demnity, Capri, 2018 Board of Directors Elections. So as you know, we have three seats that are up for election this year. We did not receive any nominations for the lower one-third category, so we only have two ballots for you to consider. There are five candidates for the upper one-third and two candidates for the middle one-third. I'm asking that the board consider doing two separate motions for those, and you can only choose one candidate for each category. Thank you.
Okay, so as we see here, the first category is the upper one-third, where we are supposed to be choosing one. There are five names in this ballot, and our Board Member Danzel is on the ballot, an incumbent Jim Friedel, Friedel, and then there's a Matthew Fuzi, and Scott Holbrook, and Michelle Lacy. We were provided with their resume and information. Yes, ready for the motion?
I move the Board of Directors vote for Brian Danzel.
Thank you.
For the upper one-third on the Capri Board of Directors.
Moved by Director Sloan?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Director Lineback. Roll call, vote.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye.
So motion carried. Good luck, Brian. Good luck. The second is the middle one-third tier, so we have two. And so I, do any of you know a Mr. Stephen Freire or Colin Miller? And if you do, they're both incumbents, any, any recommendations?
Oh, I do know them both. I served on the Capri Board with both.
Wonderful.
You know, I mean, unfortunately, because of the reorganization, even though they're incumbents, somebody is going to get knocked out of their seat, I'm afraid. Honestly, my ref, my recommendation would be for Colin Miller. I would be willing to make that motion at this time, if that's all right.
Okay, so moved by Director Lineback for Colin Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Secretary Danzel. Vote.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Thank you. So motion carried on that end. Now we move on to item I.
Thank you. Item I-1 is the District-wide Monthly Progress Report, and I'll turn it over to Administrator Larkin.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Ray, Clerk Jones. I am just going to highlight some areas of interest for the past month. As you know, we hosted the successful second Community Outreach Meeting for the pool. It was very successful. But in addition to that, we also had LPA present for the City Council for the second time. That meeting went very, very well. The update came, and they had a couple of questions regarding some of the comments that they've heard in relation to, you know, the old way of looking at the project that being, you know, ideally a 50-meter pool, which was not necessarily the intentions from the beginning. So we vetted out the need for sustainability with the City Council, corrected some of the information that was out there to make sure that everyone was on the same page. They too are very excited about this project moving forward, very complimentary to both the team, and I think we're all just waiting for us to get to the next phase of construction documents and then going on to groundbreaking, and then thus getting it going for us to have it available for 2021. So that was a very successful meeting, and I'm really glad that we're in partnership with the city to continue going with this direction. In addition to that, we had a Sacramento County meeting regarding our park impact fees. We had a team that met with the county staff, and we adjusted our approach to what their goals were. They were looking to possibly find a different fee other than what we're offering in our district currently. So we discussed our strategy, being that we would split the district in half, it being county fee, and then there would be a city fee. Since the city was already agreeing to our existing fees, we wanted to protect that funding source. And so it was a very productive meeting. They walked away. We're closer to an agreement for it to go forward to the Board of Supervisors. We're waiting for them to counter the negotiation again, but we're close. I felt very optimistic leaving there, that we are close, if not there, in terms of coming to some kind of an agreement where we still feel like it's equitable in terms of district-wide. So I'm really happy about that, and thank you to Matt and Laura and the team for us approaching it very strategically and kind of approaching it a little bit more out of the box than I think they were expecting us to, so I appreciate that. We met with two cell tower companies proposing to install cell towers on CRPD properties. It was an initial walkthrough with an interest, and so we're exploring those opportunities. When those opportunities lend themselves, we typically will investigate to see if it would be a benefit for us to possibly obtain some easy revenue if it has little to no impact on the community. for us to possibly obtain some easy revenue if it has little to no impact on the community's enjoyment of the park. So that will be at a later date that we'll bring forward if an agreement comes from one of those or both of those cell tower companies. The, I attended also the art reception and the State of the City address. And in the State of the City address, I was proud to see that we were number one in terms of the pool project being the top 15 things that the city was most proud of in their 15th year of their cityhood.
Very good.
So that was great. The elections for the board, November 6 election results will be certified by resolution at the December 19th board meeting. And the oath of office will also be administered at the next meeting, just as an update. We discussed earlier the water. Tomorrow, we have our Thanksgiving potluck at Hagan Park. If you're able to attend, we would be more than happy to have you there. We're also collecting food for the food locker and we'll be kicking off our donations for, we're adopting 10 families from the homeless program at Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. Last year, we adopted, I believe it was seven families, so we're upping it to 10. And we are kicking that off at this particular event on tomorrow. The project for the senior center, the shed is completed. Woohoo! So it looks beautiful. Park Planning, Park Services and Recreation all collaborated together to get that done. And it is a fantastic addition for them to have that out there for storage and for their use for the ceramics studio. It's a very successful Halloween at Hagan. Staff estimated the attendance was around 1,700 people this year, which is tremendous. And it was a fantastic event this year. It was really smooth. We had some support from Sac Metro Fire for the first time. They showed up with their fire trucks and handed out little badges and.
Wonderful.
So that was a nice collaboration that we're starting to establish that too. Yeah, we thought there was an emergency originally, but they were there to hand out little badges, but yeah. So we'll take them if they can, they can do it.
Sure, totally.
We're offering some new recreation classes at Hagan this fall. Kids yoga and Fridays in the Kitchen with Chef Terry have been a great success, debuting in September and October and will continue through the winter. And dancers were also happy to welcome back ballroom dance, beginning intermediate dance. And after taking some time off from that. And then karate and art and Kinder Musket instructors are looking forward to their debut in the fall. So some new courses for our residents to enjoy and get involved with. So we also had Pee-wee sports soccer season kicked off this past month. We hosted a skate park competition, skateboarding competition put on by Transworld Skateboarding and over 100 people attended the event at Mather Skate Park. Nail Orchard hosted the Mad Hatter Tea Party at the Nail Orchard Community Center and approximately 85 folks attended, 70 adults and 15 children. Also Heather did a training and presented a class on iPhone basics. So if you need to learn how to use your iPhone, Heather is our guru. So sign up for a class at the senior center if you're looking how to figure out how your iPhone works. I should probably sign up myself, but it's not just for seniors. October 31st, the senior center also hosted its annual Halloween party. The barn, the big news is we are announcing that we have two new mini pigs that we adopted. And both are neutered males and estimated to be about two years old. There's a naming competition that is out there right now. Brandy was highlighted on Fox 40 News and it was a great segment that was put out there. A part of the segment was Fox 40 wanted to go out to different highlights of the Rancho Cordova community. So the barn was something that Fox 40 wanted to kind of highlight. And so Brandy did a fantastic job being on TV for her first time. She didn't look nervous at all and she introduced the community to our new pigs. So voting is online and I believe it closes. It's closed? Okay, so we'll get you the results of their new names at our next meeting.
Wonderful.
Oh, we do? What are the, what are the names? We'll announce December. It'll be a drum rule. In development projects.
He's a being in, on the board when we're always the last to hear.
Who voted on the board?
Come on!
It's already been on social media.
Oh, okay.
Well then.
What is it?
Their names are Ham Solo and Chewbacca.
That's why I voted for it.
Okay.
Ham Solo and Chewbacca.
That's, that's kind of fantastic. In development projects, as you heard earlier this evening, three development projects in the city of Rancho Cordova, city boundaries are moving fast to start building homes, Douglas 98, Grantline 208 and Sunridge Lot J, aka Crestly Lot. So as you were told this evening, Crestly is a little bit more behind in terms of how far they're progressing, but they're pretty close. And so most likely will be in January coming forward with them attaching themselves to the, the information that we had. Also, we did note today, actually probably this afternoon, along the Jackson Highway corridor, Mather South is also starting to drum up some business with their finance plan coming forward for our review. So there is a lot of movement in the development world in our district. So it's, I can see it really starting to take off in this next coming year. So that's very exciting for all of us. Some improvement projects, the community outreach meeting was held for the Williamson Park. It seems like it was a year ago, but it was just less than a month ago. It was a really great meeting and it actually was the largest community outreach meeting I have ever had in my career. The interest of folks in that area to make that property something that they can be proud of was, was really, you know, they were very vocal about what their interests were. It seemed that they accepted a passive approach to designing it, meaning an orchard or a community garden were some of the highlights of what they were talking about. So the plan is that our consultant will be drawing up some samples. We'll be going back out to that community and reiterating what we heard them say and then kind of hopefully narrow down what that design plan will be and then go forward in looking for some funding to have us develop that. So very exciting for that. The Riviera East Walkway Improvement Project is out to bid. A mandatory pre-bid walkthrough was conducted on October 29th and seven potential bidders were in attendance. So that's exciting. Rosemont dugout replacement, the Rosemont Little League has started demolition of the existing backstop and dugout as part of their contributions to the project. The new dugout and fencing will be installed once the permit from the Sacramento County has been secured. We also have started and finished the painting of the outside and the inside gym at Mather Sports Complex. It is amazing. The difference paint makes is incredible. It looks really, really great. So in addition to that, as we are prepping for maybe some additional advancements that I'll have a report on in December, possibly January, we're doing some improvements inside the gym. We painted the interior gym and we also, while we were doing the painting, assessed the existing bleachers that have been there. They were dangerous, they were needing to be removed, replaced. So we did remove the bleachers and we'll be replacing them with some more modern portable type of bleachers that will be more safe for our customers as well as our staff to utilize. So that's very exciting. And I will have further updates on that as we go forward. We're working on the roof. We're working on some HVAC assessments through S-MUD and then some other exciting things to come. So I'll give you an update as we move forward. On the special event invitation page, on page 76, just once again, we have our event tomorrow. The holiday tree lighting, the CCC is hosting, is on November 25th at Village Green. Breakfast with Santa and the Holiday Craft Fair at the Senior Center, December 8th. Employee recognition party, December 11th. And then going forward into January, the Polar Bear Plunge and Breakfast. Also to note, we were highlighted on the cover of Parks and Recreation Magazine this month and there's an article inside your thing. We were kind of surprised, to be honest with you. It was not something we generated. It was one of our, the people that designed that particular hillside park decided to use us as a great example statewide as to how you get things done with, you know, during an economic downturn. So I was really proud to see that come out and it was, you know, a great cover. It made us look really great. So I'm thankful for them for doing that unsolicited. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? I just wanted to comment that the, the grants chart is looking very good. Staff is doing great and just want you to know that, that it's nice to see yeses. Anytime, we'll take the yeses and it seems like our planning staff is doing a great job. Okay.
Did we run a toner or something?
They figured it'd be dark.
We can always provide it to you electronically if that was what you prefer.
Well, I got it, I got it both ways, but I like to sit down with my coffee and read it.
All right. Okay, so we are now on to, we've done information items, am I right? And then Clerk, where are we now?
Item J1 is the Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach, which you see listed there. Three articles, the nomination letter for Director Danzel for Capri, one email blast, one CRPD newsletter and the Senior Center newsletter.
Yes. Any comments, questions on info items? All right, so future agenda items.
Yes, thank you. Item K1 is regarding the regular board meeting of December 19th and that is going to be a very large meeting agenda. We are sort of finding the election, election results, administering the oath of office. The board is going to elect their officer positions for 2019. And we're also going to consider the salary scale amendment, which I believe is regarding the minimum wage.
That's great. Okay.
And then you have for K2, the calendar.
Okay, thank you. So what we're going to do is we're going to be moving into closed session. If you would kindly read the items.
Yes, for closed session, we have two items. Item L1 is a public employee performance evaluation pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957, title District Administrator. Item L2 is a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency designated representative is the board chairperson and Ezra is, and the unrepresented employee is the district administrator. And just to note, there's a correction on the agenda. We will be meeting in the Coloma Room instead of the community boardroom.
All right, so we are going to be going into closed session at this time and we will return once we are done. So thank you very much for being here and if you want to hear the results, come back.